Good evening. Welcome to the April 10th, 2019 regular meeting of the Town and Milton Select Board. I'm going to begin by calling the meeting to order and ask everyone in the room to stand. As we pledge our allegiance to the flag.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to go right to item three. We have, as anyone at home is watching, we've had a series of public hearings regarding liquor license application for the Milton Club at 193 Central Avenue. We're going to continue this hearing. I'm going to pick a date. Is it the first Wednesday in June?
My understanding it was June 30th, right? Could be the second and fourth.
So I'm going to continue to the fourth Wednesday in June, whatever date that is.
That's the 26th, June 26th.
And if things change either from the neighbors or from the applicant, they can come to us. We'll conduct it. We'll continue it until that date for now. Item four, how many do we have here for citizen speak? Can you raise your hand? Okay, so we're going to ask you to each come up and sign your name. You'd be limited to five minutes. At four minutes, we'll give you a notice, and at five minutes, we'll ask you to conclude your comments.
I'm Dr. Cindy Christensen. I live at 59 Collmar Street. You can call me Cindy. I resigned my appointed position as Milton's MCAC rep last week. I want residents to know why. I have some questions that I ask you to answer during your citizen speak response agenda item. This past summer, the Chair of a Milton community nonprofit filed criminal complaints against me in Quincy District Court on behalf of his board. He did this without the board approval and without a police investigation or report. The nonprofit is a small self-appointed board. It has no general members. His allegations are that I wiretapped and that I broke into a computer system. I did not. I did nothing wrong. After nine months of false accusations and court hearings, the magistrate found no probable cause. Prior to filing criminal complaints against me in court, the resident also brought his criminal allegations to the Milton Select Board. The Select Board waited five months to communicate with me about the complaints, and when they did, it was to tell me that they had decided to hire attorneys and use town resources and funds for an investigation of me. I want the residents of the town to know that I continued to work diligently for them on the airplane problems during that five months. During those five months of silence, the Select Board met without notifying me that I was the subject of their secret meetings, but other town residents knew. The Select Board hired an attorney from the same law firm as our town council. Two additional attorneys from that law firm also participated. The Select Board's investigation went on for three months, extending well past the magistrate's decision that he found no cause. After the magistrate exonerated me, I asked the Select Board for a public, open discussion about its reaction to the false allegations and its decision to use town funds to investigate me, but my response was not answered. The investigator's report is riddled with falsehoods and bias, with some serious omissions of material provided that were provided to the investigator, but that's to be expected from this board's initiated investigation. I resigned as Milton's MCAC rep last week because I cannot continue to work for Select Board members who I believe have misaligned moral compasses and who I think used distorted and cruel ethical calculus to determine their behavior and course of action. Last week, over nine months since the alleged crime, the Select Board invited me to attend an executive meeting to quote, "discuss complaints made against you and to consider potential discipline." Discipline. It feels perverted and obsessive that members of this Select Board think it's okay to discipline a dedicated town volunteer over a private citizen's false complaint. I believe the board's actions enabled my accuser, someone who wanted me to apologize for crimes that I did not commit and who wanted to quote, "teach me a lesson," as was testified under oath by a witness. I believe this board has created a train wreck at the expense of those it's supposed to represent. I would appreciate answers to these questions. Vice Chair Zulus, you are law partners with the attorney who brought allegations about me to the Select Board. The town administrator wrote to tell me that the Board of Selectmen had decided to investigate me. You are the only Select Board member CC'd on that letter. Did you choose to participate in the board's decision to spend taxpayers' dollars on an investigation that in all appearances seems to support your law partner's attempt to quote, "teach me a lesson"? If you did not participate, did you talk to the Ethics Commission first, and if so, what was their advice to you? Chair Wells, the investigator's report contains an email to the District Attorney Morrissey that you sent from your private Yahoo account. You identified yourself as Chair of the Board of Selectmen, and you requested that Mr. Morrissey investigate this immediately, noting quote, "your grave concerns," and you thought and you said you thought I had committed crimes. Your email was sent the day after the Board of Selectmen's first secret, but not so secret meeting about me. My questions are, why did you send the email from your private Yahoo account? Did you ask the DA to investigate me on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, as your emails imply, or was this request self-initiated? If you thought that a crime had been committed, why did you not first go to our extremely competent Milton Police Department with your concerns? They are a department that routinely handles criminal complaints. What was the DA's response to your email? That was omitted from this investigation. I want to know, how much money did the Select Board spend on this investigation? I also am asking, can any Milton resident with a complaint about an appointed volunteer expect the support and backing by this Select Board and charges of criminal charges and an investigation? Select Board Member Farrington, did you recuse yourself from any of the secret meetings about me or in the board's decision to investigate me? If you did, why did you? I have copies of these questions to help you with your responses during citizen speak and a copy of the statement that I just read. I ask that these be made part of the meeting's record.
You have five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Suzanne Knight. I live at 25 Spafford Road, and I've been working with Cindy for a couple of years now, and we're working on the airplane issue with especially with the Congress. Representative Lynch and Senator Warren, Senator Markey, try to get some good bills, you know, for the whole country, basically. And that's what I really am here, this is why I'm here. You know, I'm completely dedicated to her. She's absolutely fabulous. She is completely without, you know, any hesitation. I have to say, one of the most intelligent people I've ever spent time with, and we are very lucky to have her. As I know, a lot of you already know, you know, working on our behalf with these groups, the grassroots groups, they all talk to her. They all want her on their, believe it or not, on their conference calls, which she is the expert nationally. So, you know, I'm the one who's always thanking her, but I really hope that, you know, at the end of this whole thing, that you guys could thank her. I know she's no longer actually the MCAC. She resigned, but she has done a wonderful job for not only this town and you guys, but for the region and for the country. She's very well-known. But I just want to, I do have a written statement, so if you, I'll just say it quickly, that this is from my husband, my husband and I. We live in Milton and have been acquainted, his name's Donald Knight, with Dr. Cindy Christensen for two years. We're very impressed by her work ethic, her frequent generous offers to share the information she has worked hard to understand and to do so in ways everyone can comprehend. Cindy is mostly self-taught and has developed unmatched expertise on the negative impacts of current aviation technology on people on the ground throughout the country. In particular, she has become the person that many of our congressional representatives and quiet skies groups around the country want to hear from first, for her ideas on the best ways to resolve the problems that continue to cause excessive noise and pollution for our residents, as well as the millions living near major U.S. airports. Incredulously, the pollution and noise problem continue with health impacts on all of us that are unknown in Milton, here in Milton and the rest of the nation, and all authority rests entirely on the federal government to manage and control it. It is in this context that Dr. Christensen has quickly become the person invited to present to others on conference calls or of several groups around the country or meetings, that the Chair, that the Chair of one of our own local nonprofit boards took court action against this board's highly-regarded appointee for frivolous reasons that appear to stem from a long-held personal grudge against her. At that moment in time and during each moment since that complaint was filed, we ask each of you, okay, why did you not make it abundantly clear that you would refuse to pile onto unfounded personal complaints pursued by a private resident against your hard-working, highly-regarded appointee? The complainant told others that he submitted complaints to scare Dr. Christensen, as if it was just a grand prank. Our response at that moment in time was to cut ties with the Chair and his nonprofit. Why have you all instead continued to enable his efforts to scare Cindy? Scaring someone is not a legitimate reason for filing a complaint in the court or with this Select Board. Using the court and the board because of a personal grudge against another is a fraudulent excuse to file a complaint. It's wasteful of taxpayer funds and uses the government improperly to effectively abuse and victimize. Am I surprised and disappointed at what appeared to be mean-spirited scare tactics? I would have hoped that when and after the complaints were submitted to your own board, that you could have taken a brief moment to publicly support Cindy for all she has done and is still doing every day to find a way to resolve the air traffic noise and pollution problem. Yours truly, Donald and Suzanne Knight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I leave?
You can leave it then.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Joe Henning?
Hi, I'm Phil Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive. I'm coming, I guess, to support Cindy and Suzanne by saying simply that I don't understand why Nan O'Neill, the attorney that the town hired to do the report on Dr. Christensen, didn't include something that I gave her, which was that, which was that she, I told her that the board of Fair Skies Nation did not vote to authorize these charges. So the charges were made in the name of Fair Skies Nation, but Fair Skies Nation had nothing to do with the making of those charges. They were made by an individual. The board never had a vote. The board never supported these charges. And so for that reason, I think the charges were actually made in a fraudulent manner. They were not authorized by the board. And I told Nan that, and it didn't appear in the report, which is a shame. It's a shame that you all got involved in something that you should never have gotten involved in because the charges were not legitimately made. But the main reason why I'm here is that I hope that we can now all get down to business, now that you've wasted all this money and time on something so outrageous. I said in a meeting, a Select Board meeting a couple of weeks ago, that I felt that we weren't really doing anything about airplanes, and I feel like we haven't done anything since probably last May. And I hope that ANAC and the Board of Selectmen can start getting busy, taking action toward getting us some relief from airplanes. And one of the things I mentioned was that we should have Congressman Lynch return to Milton and talk to us about what has been done. I feel like we have to hold Representative Lynch accountable to us, and the only way to do that is to bring him back repeatedly, every year or every two years, to face us and to explain to us what exactly he has done. I think that's great motivation, to remind him of the problems that we face and to push him to do more. The other thing, you know, Mr. Zulus mentioned a number of things that he felt had been done, but I guess as I watched the response to citizen speak on television, I felt that it wasn't actually completely sincere. I felt that a number of those things hadn't happened since May. They had happened before. Perhaps I'm wrong, but I think we really need to get serious. I think we really need to start taking action. I've talked about the Record of Decision from 2002. We had three attorneys investigating or coercing Cindy Christensen. I saw them in Quincy District Court. You know, I spoke with Nan O'Neill twice. I feel like instead of looking, instead of wasting time and money like that, perhaps we could talk about whether a contract was made with the Town of Milton through the Logan CAC and if we couldn't go to see whether legal action could be brought for breach of contract. I've discussed it before, and I think instead of wasting attorney time, maybe now we could pay the attorneys to do something that would be useful to all of us. Lastly, what I'd like to talk about is another issue that's completely unrelated. Across the street from me, last Saturday, the contractor to National Grid started digging up the road on Saturday. There was no one from National Grid, no one from the town, and no one from the state to inspect what was happening when they dug up the gas line. Maybe Melinda Collins will remember how the equipment was all over the corner of Hillside and Parkwood. I can't understand why the town would allow someone to open a road during the weekend on a Saturday. Why would it be that no one would be around except a police detail? Why would no one be watching what was happening? Why would no one be inspecting the connection that was ultimately made? I called National Grid on Saturday. They knew nothing about it. I went to check the documents that the subcontractor had.
You have five minutes. Mr. Joe Henning.
And the subcontractor, okay.
We have it. We have your, I've read your email. I saw your email, Mr. Dennehy.
Okay. But I want an answer. I want an answer about when is someone going to inspect that connection because it hasn't been inspected? And after what has happened in the Merrimack Valley, I think it would be a good idea for us to take these matters into our own hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add that I forgot to say I'm speaking on behalf of Tom Buckley too tonight. He could.
You can't, ma'am. He's not here, so.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to confirm future meeting dates. The board will meet again on April 24th, 2019. We will also meet prior to the May 2019 Annual Town Meeting on Monday, May 6th, 2019, Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, and Thursday, May 9th, 2019, if needed. This moves quickly to item six, Resident's Fund. We have our new MRF Coordinator, Noreen Dolan, a licensed clinical social worker, who's going to give us an update to us on her new work. Big shoes to fill. They're already leaving you. They're already leaving you. Come on up.
I know, I got my henchman.
Grab another chair. You can both come up, please.
Roger, you can sit here. I'll pull up here.
So welcome to the new job. How was that, huh?
Thank you. It's been lovely.
All of a sudden, you get to the door, and you realize they don't even have parachutes. Are they have parachutes on and you don't?
Yes, exactly. Yeah, no, it's been, it's been very busy. So my name is Noreen Kearney Dolan, the new fund coordinator for the Milton Residents Fund, and I'm here with Andrew and Roger, who you met with last summer. So I want to thank you all for inviting me to speak and for your ongoing generous support of the work to help Milton residents, three-year-olds as select persons and three-year-olds at the Governor Stoughton Trust. So I want to give a little overview of myself and kind of the work that I've been doing for the last couple of months. So I began working at the Milton Residents Fund this past October, so still fairly new, but making it through a winter heating season has been very busy. So taking over for Diane Ferrari, who you obviously have all met, wonderful work and excellent. So a little background of myself, so I was born and raised in Milton, went to Milton Public Schools, moved away for a small bit, but now I'm back in town with my family, and my youngest goes to Collycott, so I'm well-integrated in the town. I have a degree in psychology from Providence College and a degree in social work from Boston College. My background, I worked in affordable housing for seven years at Metro Boston Housing, so I worked with a lot of families struggling with housing affordability and working to keep them stable and safe all throughout the greater Boston region. And then I worked at Cambridge Family and Children's Service, working with foster care, adoption, developmental disabilities, family support and stabilization. So I was a deputy director there, you know, like saw all the kind of data and the program for the agencies. So kind of I took all that stuff, so all those kind of different programs that I oversaw and took it with me into this role of directing the Milton Residents Fund. I've had the privilege to already meet some amazing residents who are really working extremely hard to maintain stable housing and keep the utilities on in this town. There's, there's a lot of families in town. I know it still surprises people, but there's, there really is a lot of families in town that need help and that are working really hard and are certainly not trying to take advantage of the system, just are extremely grateful to make it through a winter, make it through a month. A lot of them just trying to keep their kids stable in a school system that knows them and supports them, or elders or veterans trying to stay in a town that they've, you know, lived in their whole life and have supports here. And I've seen a lot of generosity, especially around the holiday season, the different church communities really work well together, the, the school system, so it's really amazing. Donations coming in as well. So to talk about the fund priorities, the priority of the Milton Residents Fund continues to be helping our neighbors out of crisis. So focusing on the stabilizing housing when there's a risk of eviction, helping with a security deposit when it's preventing a family from stably rehousing, preventing shut-off of electric or gas service, or purchasing a tank of winter heating oil when someone's out of heat. So the kind of basic necessities, that's still the direction of the Governor Stoughton Funds, any other funds that we get in. But of almost equal importance to basic needs, we really hope the trustees, myself, to increasingly support pathways out of poverty. So how can we help in some capacity with professional certification, professional licensing, really helping individuals to move up socio-economically and be able to afford to care for themselves? We have some single moms in town that are working towards their nursing degrees, and so you can see that light at the end of the tunnel where they'll be able to better support their family's needs. So how can we support them to reach that goal? In addition to those priorities, the Milton Residents Fund plays a large role in the holiday season, coordinating gifts to the children in town who otherwise wouldn't have any other options. So this year was my first year through the ring around that, and we had a fantastic partnership with the Milton Public Schools and the PTO. So I worked closely with Marty McKenna O'Keefe, the family liaison for the Milton Public Schools, and she worked closely with the PTO. So the Public Schools and the PTO collected an array of actual gifts and gift cards. I worked with the Milton Food Pantry and the school liaison to identify those families that could use the help. And then I worked with my brother's keeper, a charity organization in Easton, which hand-delivered the gifts to everyone's door.
I know it very well. That's quite a place.
Yeah, right. I know. They said it's like Santa's workshop, and there's just, they said they have an overabundance of people with trucks wanting to hand-deliver gifts, and I said, "Well, sounds good to me." You know, like, because that's the toughest part to like buy Christmas, getting it to their doorstep. So really, I was kind of bracing for any complaints, and it really didn't receive them. You know, one family got kind of boy-centered gifts when they wanted girl-centered gifts, but we were able to rectify that with some gift cards. But overall, that kind of holiday program was able to help 85 separate families and over 200 children. So all Milton children identified by the school system with a food pantry. So it was a really smooth collaboration among groups. So it's just kind of one of the ways that Milton residents were donating gift cards or gifts that were unrestricted that we could use in that way. So then in terms of current needs that I'm seeing, so starting in December, I started really collecting some more data, so I hope to get a whole year of more data and see the ebbs and flows of the spending. But since December, so just say in the last four months, I've been able to help 60 adults aged 19 to 61, some of them on multiple occasions if they needed a tank of gas and maybe prevented an electric shut-off, things like that. 18 adults over the age of 62, and then in those households were 70 children. Issues of helping those families were all directly related to a housing crisis, utility shut-off, requests for home heating oil, emergency medical costs, and a couple like urgent needs for basic things like a mattress or eyeglasses for an elder, low-income elder, or an urgent car repair to maintain employment, things like that. In the last month, I've had nine families headed by single working parents called desperate for help covering the Milton Parks and Rec Camp. So that's currently today and last week and the week before, just fielding non-stop calls on that. So myself with young kids get really nervous, the idea of school ending. So Milton Parks and Rec Camp relatively affordable, $650 that covers the whole summer, but $650 for a lot of our families living paycheck to paycheck, they're worried about how to keep that job and keep their children safe. So I've been kind of reaching out to the Kiwanis Club and the Milton Women's Club and different groups that might be able to help support some of these summer camps, because my understanding the Governor Stoughton and other funds are focused primarily on the housing and utilities, which, which we also focus on. So, so yeah, I personally would love to see if there's an opportunity, depending on the definition of how Governor Stoughton Funds could be used, if some of that gift could be used in ways that aren't just housing utilities, if that's an option for us to consider. I'd love to be able to support low-income working parents in that way. I currently have kind of a waitlist of eight additional children that are looking for help with, with camp costs. So kind of I let them know that I'd investigate options, and I know the camp fills up within a week or two, so.
Is that the same camps you had discussed with Melinda earlier, the same exact camp?
Yes. So most of the children I've registered so far are the Milton Parks and Rec Camp. There's one youth that was going to the Boys and Girls Club in Dorchester because that has longer hours and the parent had a longer work schedule, but yes, yep.
Was that six? How many kids?
Yes, there were six. I got a call from a school guidance counselor at the Tucker today, asking for me to consider two others, and I said I would, I would investigate and let them know.
Okay, so not to belabor this, if you can have that presentation together, all of them, to Mr. Dennehy by Monday or Tuesday?
Sure.
We'll place that on our agenda for the April 24th meeting for discussion, because I, I think I said this to Melinda when I first saw it, what will happen is the camps will fill up. I know you don't need the money right now, but if you can get them, the camps fill up and then you'll be out. So why don't you start then and get the number to Mr. Dennehy as soon as you can?
Okay, to, to figure out the cost, okay?
Okay.
And then get, sure. Okay, that'd be wonderful. Yeah, I think last year Bonnie at Parks and Rec said it filled up within a week and a half. So the first day it opened, I, you know, parents were like, "Did you really do it?" So I, you know, who I could register, I did it online for them. So I'll get that tomorrow.
I think we should clarify that the Governor Stoughton Fund is for the benefit of the poor. It's not restricted to housing and utilities.
Okay.
I think a lot of the requests in recent times have been around those areas.
Okay, that's.
It's, the fund itself is not limited to that.
Okay, that's good to know, because I certainly didn't want to make gifts using those funds that were like out of bounds, you know, like that, that weren't within.
No. And from a team perspective, historically in this town, especially parents, especially if they're the single parent and they're working.
Yes.
Having kids, particularly middle school ages up, home hanging around, so anything structured that we could help with, to Katie's point.
Yes.
It doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
I have an idea of the number you're looking for. If you can get that officially, we will get that on the agenda with the next committee.
Yeah, because the kids are all the nine, 10, 11.
I get it.
Right.
I guess.
So, yeah, it just feels like a good fit, and I'm certainly vetting each family and their income level. I'm using a 300% of the federal poverty level number.
Right.
So, and I have those numbers if anyone wants an idea of those, but you know, just getting a sense of who could really benefit, so that'll be wonderful, and I will send that over. But, you know, just getting a sense of who could really benefit, so that'll be wonderful, and I will send that over.
So, so ti- timing-wise though, I mean, how, how would, how will that work out for getting them in?
I can't take a, we can't take a vote tonight because we don't have a Governor Stoughton meeting on our agenda. But I sense the feeling of my colleagues here. I want you to start preparing for that and just get it to us already, and then we'll move on the funding on the twenty-fourth, how's that?
Yeah, no, it's, it's good to get feedback on the flexibility of the fund.
Because if we wait until we meet, you may be out of luck.
Yep, okay, absolutely, okay, yeah, I had a call with Paul Donano today.
Yeah, sure, what's, what's the amount, I'm just.
Six fifty per kid.
Yeah, six fifty per kid, there's like a small fee when you register them online, but I can obviously.
So how, so just in terms of the aggregate, how much do we think, you know, roughly, how many do we think we might be able to get in?
Numbers of kids, I mean, I'd say about eight that I have in mind now, that, that I didn't already match with like another donation, like Milton Helping Hands was able to support one child to.
So we're talking about five thousand bucks, roughly?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's eight, or a little bit more.
Math was not high.
We're not holding, just, just.
Yeah, no, no, just to get a sense.
Yeah, to give us a sense.
Yeah, so not some, yeah, yeah, I won't go wild on it, but.
And I, I want to say thank you to all the, the organizations like Milton Helping Hands who have stepped forward and of course Martin Swift and, I mean, it, it takes a village and, and thank you for reaching out to, to, to all these organizations and giving us a chance to help and.
Thank you. And so let me just see if there's any, anything else. Okay, so I can't, so just kind of a, a general sense of the numbers too. So in the past four months, about eighty-five thousand has been distributed from the Milton Residents Fund. So that, I was just thinking earlier, it's a little skewed high because of the winter heating season, a lot of oil requests. Like fuel assistance, the government lag heat program through QCAP and Quincy covers a lot of the Milton residents for fuel assistance, and they get maybe eight, nine hundred towards gas or oil, but that tends to run out, say, January, February, and then the calls come in for like one or two more tanks of oil to get them through the winter, and they're all certainly income-eligible and they're vetted through other government programs. And of the sixty thousand in the Governor Stoughton gifted to the Milton Residents Fund, thirty-eight thousand of that last gift has been distributed. So I can, you know, get more details on that whenever you need it. The families requesting assistance have been split roughly as about fourteen percent are market-rate renters in town, forty-seven percent have come from renters that have a housing subsidy, need help with utilities, and thirty-nine percent of the requests have come from property owners. So at first I come from a, like, Metro Boston Housing, a lot of housing vouchers, and I kind of thought a lot of the requests would all be from people maybe with subsidies, but a lot of the homeowners, two-family homeowners really struggling with upkeep of their property. So saying the property owners I found were in pretty bad shape, I got actually three calls in a row of leaking oil tanks this winter and using some of the unrestricted funds to fix the oil tank, because otherwise they could maintain the home just, you know, getting by, because a lot of the properties, even if they sold, they were kind of underwater and trying to find a rental unit. So, I know, I won't go on too long, but, so I've, a lot of the property owners needing help, kind of basic necessities with, with home repairs to keep them stable. That's been a need, so I've helped a little with water tanks or oil leaks, but I can't obviously, I imagine, unless further discussion, fixing roofs or porches or, or other things as a request. So just moving forward.
Do you go find the contractors for all them two to do this, or do you let them do it?
Yeah, uh, well, so.
That's a lot of work if you're doing all of that.
Right, so Williams Oil has been a company that Diane Ferrari had a strong relationship with. They have an amazing price on oil that better than, I've done some research. So they have, they'll obviously go out and inspect the tank before delivery, and so I pay the vendor directly, not the family. So I'll pay Williams Oil to go and deliver, say, you know, a hundred fifty gallons, and they'll call me and say, "We did an inspection, we, we can't do that delivery, it's leaking, but an arm of our business can come out and repair that tank, install a new tank," you know, and verify it with the homeowner. And so I was doing the kind of negotiations of work. The water tank that burst for a, a veteran in town, well, two water tanks, two separate people, there's a lot of issues this winter, but they did have vendors already in place, repair people that I talked to, and were able to make those repairs. So, so yeah, kind of supporting pathways out of poverty, definitely want to keep looking at supporting people to, to, parents to get education, move. Where the public transportation is limited in town, I want to be able to assist a little more in emergency car repairs to make sure adults can keep that employment, that can be a barrier in Milton, and medical appointments. And I just think this is a very unique fund in a very special town, and working in, in the greater Boston region, I, you know, people ask me, well, like, what other towns have this? I, I really have never heard of it, just a very specific pot of money to help our residents, so we can be a real leader in helping our residents. And so I want to thank the sport of, of you all as select people and as your role of Governor Stoughton. I think we can do great things, thank you.
So you're doing God's work, you're following two angels, Sherri Dolgin who goes.
Yes, I know her names on all the files, and everyone's like, "Oh, Sherri's such an angel."
When I first heard of MRF, and obviously Diane, who's done incredible work. I had a young sergeant when I first go in the police department thirty-something years ago who said, "If you ride around this community and never get out of your car and never walk in a house, you're not going to know what really goes on." And we are not immune, even though I often like refer to Milton as ours, we're not immune to the pressures of society, that society puts upon us today, including some of the situations you've described tonight, and you really are doing God's work, and if we can help you.
Yeah, yeah, there's some incredible people, I've met like a lot of people struggling with cancer and car accidents and disabilities and injuries from being veteran, I mean, just unbelievable stories, and they're coming, yeah, right, right in the next building and, and crying in my office, so it's, it's been amazing to be able to help.
Next Christmas, have you been to My Brother's Keeper to see the operation?
No, I, I, yeah, I really do have.
And it's one of the most impressive things I've ever seen, like, you mentioned a couple of things.
Yeah, the woman who runs it, and I'm blanking on her name, was.
Ter- uh, Jimma Teriorka, one of the directors, and, um, Michael, Michael knows them.
Yeah.
But just the system and the way they do, I think they had a hundred fifty thousand Christmas families this year. Just the system that they do is just, but it would help for what you do, it's kind of, other than deliveries, the structures. And one of the main people behind it is the deacon at St. Agnes, the deacon Dan Sullivan.
Oh, yeah, they did a pickup from the St. Agnes, like, parking lot.
Yeah, very, very involved.
They were so excited that Milton was like coming into their My Brother's Keeper Christmas program, and Diane was so nervous to like hand it off to me, yeah, and to let it go, and so she was like, because they were just, normally you'd be like, "Oh, I have to help more families," but My Brother's Keeper was like, "Yes, we get to help more families," I was like, "Okay."
They just opened their second one down in Dartmoor.
Yeah, so, so yeah, it was wonderful, so they were really.
Anybody else I know talk too much here tonight?
Any questions?
Well, I, I just want to thank you for all that you're doing, because this is the kind of thing that, that we need to be focused on, focusing on and helping you with. You know, sometimes we get distracted with a lot of silliness and, and a lot of noise, but these are the things that we need to focus on. You're helping children and you're helping seniors and you're helping people that need help, and that's the kind of thing that we need to assist you with, and that's the kind of thing that, that, that we want to spend our time on. So, so come back next time and, and, and let's see what we can do about getting more kids in those camps.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Norine.
Get your numbers in.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you all.
Number seven, we have approval of one-day liquor license for the Milton Arts Center. We have a motion for force to approve a one-day liquor license for Milton Arts Center at three thirty-four Ed Hill Road for Steve Sweeney Comedy Night on April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, from seven to eleven.
So I'll move that we approve a one-day liquor license for the Milton Arts Center, three thirty-four Ed Hill Road for the Steve Sweeney Comedy Night on April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, from seven to eleven P.M.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number eight, discussion approval of First Amendment to the Air Rights Agreement. This is a motion for approval, Amendment to the airspace license agreement made the tenth day of October nineteen ninety-three between the Commonwealth of Massachusetts through its Highway Department and the Town of Milton. As follows, this First Amendment to airspace license agreement is made between the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, through the Massachusetts Department of Transportation here and after referred to as MassDOT, successor to the Mass Highway Department and the Town of Milton. Mass, thanks for writing all this, Jen, because I didn't, because I was going to, I knew it, but, all right. And two, notwithstanding any other provisions of this agreement, the town may reopen as a public way for vehicular non-motorized transportation and pedestrian use. That portion of Adams Street formerly in such use within the town common upon written notice to MassDOT and the Federal Highway Administration, except as modified here in the provisions of the agreement will remain a full force in effect. And this is to protect our rights on the Adams Street overpass, which is currently closed, should we ever want to open it in the future, before we begin the DEP project, which is going to begin next year in two thousand twenty.
So Mr. Chair, this, I, I don't think we need this lengthy motion tonight. We already had a lot of discussion about this in the past, and I think it was last October, there was just some language that needed to be added to clarify that we were talking about opening it to cars, not just pedestrian or, or other types of traffic other than cars. So that language has been added, I think there's a word missing from number two here, but it's in the actual draft of the, of the document.
Should we just make the, the outlined in red box the motion and go to that?
I mean, unless anyone else has further changes, I think we're really just authorizing perhaps the town administrator and the planning director to negotiate this language with Mass DOT, they may come back and have some changes to it.
We do that as a motion and we do it as a comment? Do you want to vote on it? Oh, no, you just want to?
I'll move that we author, well, unless anyone else has changes, I mean, we should have, I mean, for the comments, if there's changes.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
What Katie said, I'll second.
I'll present it to Administrator Gulliver, as it reads.
All right, so I'll move that we authorize the town administrator to negotiate the First Amendment, the First Amendment to the airspace license agreement from nineteen ninety-three with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation.
Go second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nine. Discussion, approve the Select Board to appoint two members to the school committee. We do have a motion, I have.
Uh, so Mr. Chair, I'm going to be recused on this, and I just want for the people who are watching to understand, when you, when you're talking about appointing a building committee, a project is getting close to possibly being bonded. If it's bonded, I work with the Town's Bond Council, so for that reason, I'm going to be recused, and that's similar to the approach I took with the fire building committee. So I'm going to step out of the room on this one.
Just before you leave, do you have anyone that you want to?
No, and I can't, I can't get involved in that because I'll be recused, so, thank you.
So I have one resident, and I believe we have one member that has volunteered. Does anyone have anyone? Or anyone want to? Mr. Zulis says, which in my opinion is a good fit, only because you're so familiar with the school operation, and the resident who came to me currently sits on a current building committee, and I think, and I've listened, I think communication between building committees is, is just a good thing, and he's very skilled, and that's Dan Clark, who's the vice chair of the Fire Station Building Committee. He's one of, assume both roles. Does that, do we have anyone else, or anyone else have any thoughts, or does anyone else wish to? I know we have a lot of work on our plates.
Well, I, I was wondering if they had any special skills that they were still looking for. I do have concerns that Mr. Clark being on two building committees, that seems like a, a lot, but perhaps the Fire Station Building Committee is winding down.
So the one thing that I did like the idea of, and this was suggested to me from Bill Ritchie earlier last year, we should have one building committee and talk between, because they're looking across, and when I, and now Dan Clark never knew this, and so when Dan Clark volunteered and, and said to me, you know, "Working at Samit, we're talking about common, we're talking about monies," I thought it was a good, he had no idea of the conversation I had with Bill Ritchie, so my first thought was, to you, was like, "Look, you've got enough on your plate." But he, he's, he definitely has the bug, he, I don't know if everyone, he considered running for planning board this year as well. He's a young, spot, educated engineer who is willing to give to his community, so I, I was, if, but my first thought is if two members want to serve, that would be my preference, but if not, in lieu of that, I'll be, as you know, we have, we don't even have to vote tonight, just, we can do it, we can just talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm with Melinda in, in the respect that, to the extent that, to the extent that we can fill holes that may be there, that the moderator needs some assistance with, and we can have a designee or designees filling those holes, I think it makes sense. I think it makes a lot of sense to have a designee with expertise, building expertise, rather than two of us, frankly. I think it may make sense to have one of us, at least, because I think that's what town meeting wanted, and that's what, that's what the warrant committee wanted, and I think that's what the school committee wanted, so I think it makes sense to have at least one of us. I do think it makes to have some of the expertise, and, and then maybe, maybe we coordinate with the, the moderator to see what they need, what they need as expertise.
Right, and Mr. Clark may be exactly what's needed, and I, I understand some towns do have a standing building committee, which does afford some expertise to, to develop and build over time. But, but yes, so I just want to say thank you, because it, it makes sense, you, you know the schools, and thank you for stepping forward.
It's another nut a week out of the house.
Well, maybe it makes mornings easier.
Do you, so do we want to vote tonight, or do you want to wait? Tony, do you have? What's the makeup of the committee again? How many members? Nine? I don't remember how, I think, I don't think it was nine, is it nine?
I didn't think it was nine.
I don't think it was that big. Two, two from us.
Two from the school.
Two from the school committee, and then the rest of the moderators, because if you remember, at the time, I mean, there was a motion to try and make the superintendent, she did not want, and I get that, I get that.
So there's four, two from here, two from school committee.
And then whatever the moderator appointed.
The other three.
So the Fire Station Building Committee.
I thought they had.
It's three or five, but it's seven or nine.
That's right, that's right.
I thought it was nine, that was what.
Maybe you are, maybe it is. It may be the size of the Fire Station, the Fire Station Building Committee is now.
Eleven with the chief and the firefighter.
Maybe it is nine.
I believe it was nine.
I would prefer to just put the word out to, to people that I'm in touch with to see if, to gauge interest. Nobody has proactively reached out to me and said, "I have an interest in doing this, I would like to be on this committee." It's possible that they're not aware of it, but, you know, I'd like to send out at least an email to about a half a dozen people who could conceivably have an interest in it, see what their response is, and then go from there.
I'm fine with that. So we'll put it on for the twenty-fourth, enough time?
Great.
And we'll agree that Mr. Zulis will be one representative from the Select Board? Want to vote that now? Want to make a motion to vote that now?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Katie can, I think she, I hope she can.
I'll get her.
Okay, item ten, which is discussion on the feasibility, town center feasibility study, the town administrator's teen center feasibility study, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If, if, for, for memory sake, Representative Driscoll secured some state grant funding to help design a teen center in town. Chief Procurement Officer Arlene Zenega put out a request for proposals about a month and a half ago. There were eleven packages received in, in total, which was great. We qualified four of them, and we is Scott McKay Parks Commissioner, Sarah Callahan Chair of the Youth Task Force, myself and Arlene Zenega. We sat with each of those four through one-hour presentations yesterday and today. All four of them very, very qualified. I believe it's becoming a niche industry, this municipal feasibility study and support for building or growing centers in town, be it a community center, a teen center, fire stations, any, any type of municipal building that's going on, but all four of them are very, very qualified. We are under some time constraints, so the decision was to go forward with the consensus, and, and this grant money needs to be spent by June thirtieth, this thirty thousand dollars, so. It was unanimous, company that came in today, and forgive me if I mispronounce their name, but it's Bogman, Hendry and Archetype Incorporated. They've worked on many local projects, including the Randolph Intergenerational Facility, so anyone that's seen that, that facility knows the quality of work that's been done there, so. They will be notified tomorrow and get working on it quickly. They've got about eleven weeks with which to come back with this feasibility study for the town. We've seen some of their reports of, you know, similar funding sources and amounts, and it's quite an extensive report, and I think it'll give this board and the town some, some good information as to how to proceed with, with teen center in town. So, I want to thank the representative for securing those funds and the group that worked so hard. Again, the four we sat with over the last two days were, were all equally qualified with their own specific strengths and weaknesses, but we were unanimous in supporting BHNA this morning. So, we'll get moving on that project as quickly as can and deliver a report to this board before the end of June.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good? Okay. Item 11, approval of Arbor Day proclamation. We have a motion before us to approve and sign a proclamation declaring that Friday, April 26, 2019, is Arbor Day in the town of Milton, but our highly esteemed administrative support lady over here made Arbor Day today for us with these beautiful flowers that sit on her desk. Thank you, Jennifer. So, you're trying to tell us spring is coming, or is it here? Didn't feel like it was here today, but, so we have a motion before us?
I move to approve and sign a proclamation declaring Friday, April 26, 2019, as Arbor Day in the town of Milton.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Twelve, we have discussion approval municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. This was been prepared by our towns of Ireland to coordinate Hillary Wait. You want to talk to this, Michael?
Sure, yeah, very quickly, this, this goes to the Assistant Secretary of Climate Change in Secretary Beaton's office. Basically, it's, it's just an application to the Commonwealth for the town of Milton as the select board, preparing the impacts of climate change. For those of you who heard Mayor Walsh's budget unveiling today, that one of his primary concerns is climate change and its, and its effect on Boston as a coastal town, and, and greater Boston for that matter. So, basically, if everybody hasn't had a chance to review this, we can take a look at it on the 24th, but it's pretty simple. It's, it's a commitment by this select board to address climate change and invite stakeholders in the community and local emergency, planning officials, human services organizations, to support the efforts of this board, and they're asking for a commitment from this select board. It's due May 3rd to Secretary Beaton's office, but Hillary's done yeoman's work on this as she does with each and every project to prepare this. Yeah, and, and there is a commitment by this board to attend workshops and, and follow through on, on some of the boxes that they ask you to check as being a part of, of, of this preparedness planning grant to be eligible for the grant, so.
Was the dollar, was this?
I'm not sure what the dollar amount is. I, I think they determine it at a later date.
They determine it, okay.
Depending on how many municipalities enroll, yeah.
Any questions? Go ahead.
So, so Mike, on the workshop, the municipal vulnerability preparedness planning workshop, is this something that we would host just for residents? Is it something that we would host for others in the region, do you know? Or is it, and, and, yeah?
So, last year, myself and, and select board member Farrington went down to Quincy City Hall. Mayor Koch hosted a workshop. It could be something that we host here. There are additional ones that will be offered that we can attend as a group or individually. It was, it was pretty productive the day we went down there. There was, everybody from the South Shore was, was at Quincy City Hall that day, so. TBD, I know Hillary, in, in her energy and expertise, would want to host one here with some of our business partners and residents, and, and those impacted the most. I mean, we saw what, what happened down at the Wharf on January 4th of last year in the Cortland Circle thistle area where it, I mean, it was almost impassable for public safety vehicles, so. Milton is impacted by climate change, and, and we would be remiss if we didn't follow through on this.
And in more ways than just flooding, in, in ways that we haven't really, I think, begun to see fully yet. So, I'm very excited about this, and I, I was looking at this too as an opportunity, if we have residents and we're, we bring, you know, our professionals in town together, our, our staff, and really look at Milton to add this to the work of the Master Plan Implementation Committee as we sort of build the vision of, of what Milton is and use that as a board and town hall to, to further, you know, all the, the improvements and the changes that we'd, we'd like to see go forward in a positive way in town. So, I, I think this is a wonderful step.
Anybody else? Good? Okay.
Do we want to move forward? Yeah, we want to move forward.
The board, yes, okay. Someone make a motion?
I'll move to approve the following, I'm sorry. I'll move to approve the municipal vulnerability preparedness planning grant proposal provided by our environmental coordinator, Hillary Wait.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Hillary, for her fine work as always. Item 13, we've approved traffic commission recommendations. These are following recommendations from their meeting of March 27, 2019. We have one, two, well, twenty-two, two recommendations, changes to the town bylaws on the articles I listed. Someone, you want to read it for us?
What number, you have, Richard?
13. So, we have two, one motion is to make Rose Street and Adams Street to install a stop sign on Rose Street at Adams, and the second one is Oak Street to revise the do not enter 7:00 to 9:00 and 3:00 to 5:00 on school days on Oak Street at Blue Hills Parkway to do not enter 8:15 to 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. to 3:45 p.m. on school days. And I believe that recommendation comes from the traffic commission from a request brought from the toxic community.
Yeah.
Yes, I want to say thank you for, for going and working with them on that.
And further revised by the doctor on the corner.
Right.
Yeah, and they, they met back on the site again and refined the hours to accommodate some of his clientele.
That one makes total sense. I'm, I'm fine with the first one, too. I'm just curious, do people not know enough to stop at the corner of Roman Adams?
No, I believe this is to stop, to install a stop sign, so obviously people aren't stopping there.
But that's your point?
Right, I mean, it's.
It's Adam Street, people should stop, is that what you're saying?
I guess, yeah. I'm surprised that they, they need a stop sign to tell them to stop.
Just to give you a little history, so to, a stop sign, to meet a stop sign installation in the call up in Massachusetts, you have to meet the criteria, what's called the Massachusetts Unified Traffic Code.
Yeah.
And there's a lot to do it. It's actually very hard, so obviously, in the traffic commission looking at this, it definitely met the criteria, whether it's in violations, the design of it, whatever, and that's why they're making the recommendation to us.
So, I'll move that we approve the following recommendations from the traffic commission, of the traffic commission from their meeting on March 27, 2019. Number one, Article 8, Section 2, Rose Street at Adams Street, install a stop sign on Rose Street at Adams Street. And number two, Article 8, Section 24, Oak Street, revise, quote, "Do not enter 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. on school days," unquote, signs on Oak Street at Blue Hills Parkway to, quote, "Do not enter 8:15 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. to 3:45 p.m. on school days," unquote.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only thing, the only thing that I would add is that, at, at the traffic commission, where these were approved, there are also some other items that have been put forward by the traffic mitigation committee as a result, we're meeting with residents, and that the DPW is going to be able to affect without a vote of the traffic commissioner without us. And so, so we're, we're able to learn of those things in a meeting that occurred probably about six weeks ago.
February 28.
February 28, so, so about six weeks ago, seven weeks ago. And, and we're actually responding and affecting some changes based on the residents' input. And so, so it's, you know, it's a good process, it's been a good process, and hopefully we'll continue to be able to do that.
So, I'm going to follow up on your, do we have, is there a lot of here?
Yeah, it's, yes.
There was, there was two that were identified specifically at the meeting.
Okay, so they did.
Yeah. Off Street about creating a do not block, block the box, which they discussed and supported, but didn't take a vote on. And the other was the stop sign at Lethorp and Churchill.
Right.
Which they are going to, they're going to reconfigure the striping and, and the stop.
Add a crosswalk.
Yeah, and add a crosswalk in place of, there is a stop sign there already, that they're going to add a crosswalk for a safer, safer pedestrian access.
So, for the public at home, and just to follow up to Mr. Zulus's comments, in every traffic commission meeting, you will have that. There will be discussed, deferred, no action, things that don't require an actual vote of us that are always listed in that, and you'll continue to see that all the time, so. Thank you for that. Now, we've got to figure out how to get back to where I went. No, I think I'm all right. Hit the whiskey? Really? All right? Nope. That's why I have my written copy, keeps me out of trouble. All right. Did we vote? Did we just vote on that?
We didn't vote yet.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second?
We have a second, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, sorry. Okay. Item 14, approved by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee revised recommendations. We have a motion before us to approve the revised recommendations from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee from its March 27, 2019 vote to include $350,000 non-bonded capital for the purchase of trash barrels related to the solid waste trash removal plan, program planned for 2020 rollout.
This is a bit, a bit of housekeeping. This board had never voted on a position for that. We weren't going to try to put this on, it was removed from the capital improvement committee's recommendations back in January when we sat with them, and then as we worked our way through the FY20 budget process, we all realized that the sooner we, we accomplish this rollout initiative with the trash barrels, the better, and this board just needs to take a vote in support of that if you so choose. It's a bit of housekeeping. The capital improvement committee voted it previously, and we just need a, a support of this board for determining.
So, we have a motion before us to approve this? Can I get a motion, please?
I, I'll move to approve the revised recommendation of the capital improvement planning committee from its March 27, 2019 vote to include $350,000 non-bonded capital for the purchase of trash barrels, trash barrels related to the solid waste trash removal program planned for 2020, FY2020 rollout.
Second.
Discussion?
The only thing I'll say, my assumption, I'm, I'm sure this, this fits within and is part of the budget deal that the warrant committee approved.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so what, what we did on the revenue side is we anticipated about $150,000 more of revenue from that side of the balance sheet, and then this is the, the complementary investment that has to be made in order to see that revenue stream.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item 15, conference approval small cell design guidelines. There's a motion before us to approve small cell guidelines for the town of Milton. You know, we're, we're in the beginning of this? Am I correct, Katie, am I saying that? We're one of the first to have such a thing? Or we will be?
I don't think we're one of, well, it's not, yeah, I guess we're probably in an early group, but there are some towns that have already acted on this, so. I think we need to prove the actual policy name, and I'm just trying to pull it up on the email, because it's, it's probably here, Jim, but I, I have, I, you've attached the FCC policy, but I don't see the actual document.
So, town council was working on this late this afternoon. They've, they've worked with other communities in a similar capacity. We asked them to, to mold it to Milton's needs. It's obviously a, a universal concern in many municipalities. Some have addressed it, and this is, this is the board's first attempt to identify how to proceed with, with the 5G small cell stuff that undoubtedly will be coming to our town.
It's the world we live in today. I saw you have a minute for one.
No, 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 I was thinking.
So, our understanding, I think, is that this is written as a policy so that eventually we can put a bylaw in place, hopefully in October.
Okay.
And this is a model the town council took with another community that they represent. So, normally, where we have a policy committee that Tony and Mike are serving on, normally a policy would go through the policy committee, and there'd be a couple of readings at this board. This is a, a really evolving area, and there's time sensitivity here, because we were told at the annual conference we all went to in, in January, that the deadline for putting aesthetic guidelines in place is April 14th, so that's a few days away, and we've been kind of scrambling to get this in place, so it seems to be a pretty reasonable approach. Town council's put a lot of work into it, as well as Bill Clark, and I think that we should waive the ratings. I'm not sure what the correct language would be, but I think waive the, waive the ratings and adopt the policy.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the policy and adopt, and adopt the policy. How's that? Can I get a second?
Second.
So, then we have a motion for us to approve the small, we don't even have to, that's it, right? Any others?
I think we should use the, this was written before the, the final title came over, so I'll, I'll move that we approve the town of Milton policy on application requirements and aesthetic standards for small wireless facility installations.
Second. Any other discussion?
Just for context, the, the reason we need to do this is that the wireless providers in connection with 5G are putting up new little boxes on the poles, and, and if we don't have any guidelines in effect, they can basically do whatever they want. And so, so it's important for us to do this, and to do it quickly, so we can have some say in what the aesthetic result of these, these boxes is, so, anyway.
Correct. Not to keep going back to my previous capacity, but in Boston, a lot of them would have to run through a lot of the architectural access boards as well, in addition to that. You know, the Back Bay has a special architectural access board, the North End, the South End, places like that, where there was a specific bylaw or ordinance in place, but those architectural access boards also could script the aesthetic looking, the ways of them. Some of them were migrated into traffic signals, and you didn't even know they were there. Other ones were more pronounced and somewhat obnoxious, so. I think setting a policy is, is, they are coming to town. It's, it's how you want them to look in your town is, is important.
Are they anywhere now? Are they actually up anywhere that we know of?
They are. The ZBA granted a few, a couple of years back, and that same company filed for an application to put more. I should know where, but it slips me at this time. Joe Pranek has been in discussion with, with that group, but the zoning board of appeals approved a couple for that same 5G provider, probably about a year or two ago.
Yeah, and, and that's one of the good points to bring out, that our existing bylaw on wireless telecom puts this within the jurisdiction of the Board of Appeals, and there's a design review board that's in place that probably serves a similar function to what the one, the architectural review boards in Boston serve. But in order to, when we finally put a bylaw in place, hopefully in October, it, it may be that we want to transfer all of this to the Board of Appeals or the planning board, and we may or may not be the appropriate body, but right now, the way the policy's written, it, it's going to put the responsibility to act on us, and there's a very short window, it's a 60-day window. So, if we get an application that's going to come into the town administrator, we are going to have a condensed period of time in order to act upon it. Town council's emailed to us this afternoon, said that some communities are looking at outside consultants to review them and advise on it. We may need to explore that as to who the, who the consultants are who are doing this kind of work, and whether, what the costs are, whether we can engage someone.
Yeah, and, and the other flying, and Milton is we don't own many, if any, of the poles. In Boston, we owned all the poles, so you, you have a right, and you can charge rent for that, for this device to be on. It's a, it's a source of revenue in Boston. If you want to put something on, on a telephone pole that, that, or a streetlight that Boston owns, there's a source of revenue from that, but because Milton doesn't own many of these poles, you have to set the framework for how they're going to look, because the poles are Verizons, or N-Stars, or Comcast. So, they'll just go up without you knowing. So, it's important to get this in place.
Okay.
Right. I know from some of the material that the, the MMA put out, that there are suggestions for how to, to do the process, to have pre-submission conferences with staff and formal submitted procedures and, and special internal handling procedures. procedures and, and special internal handling procedures. Are those things that we already have in place, or things that we're going to be considering, or maybe we'll go the way of the internal consultant or external consultant? I don't know.
We have no idea how many of these will, I would take it to do the whole time. You're going to have quite a few.
Right.
I agree with Katie. I think this is something that does wind up going back to the ZBA in the long run as far as the approval and enforcement of them. It just seems to be there. And I, what you're referring to, if, if I'm correct, it was about three years ago, Bill Clark was, I was aware of it. It's up in your neighborhood. Verizon came in and put, where they couldn't put cell towers because cell towers fall, it's like, that's why many of them are hidden church steeples and so you don't see them all over. It's up in here. There's several of these on, on poles up there.
I'll find it. It's in an email here recently.
For cellular communication, for cellular function.
Yeah. Um, and since this is a, a policy, we'll be revisiting this when we make it into a bylaw.
Yes.
Yes.
So I, I had comments and questions, but I can just save them for that time then.
Okay. Given that.
St. Mary's Road. There's a single antenna on St. Mary's Road. As I look through this, I'll, I'll find the locations.
Okay. So, all those in favor? Did we vote already? Did we already vote? I think we were in discussion.
We haven't, we haven't.
We haven't voted yet, correct?
Right.
So all those in favor? No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. It's unanimous. Sixteen is approval of meeting minutes. We have a motion to approve select board minutes from August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, October twenty-second, twenty eighteen, and October twenty-third, twenty eighteen, as written. Can I get a motion?
I sent over some changes today. Do they, are they in the current version? Okay.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Melinda.
I move to approve select board minute, minutes from August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, October twenty-second, twenty eighteen, and October twenty-third, twenty eighteen, as written and as revised.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seventeen. Approval boards and committees. This is an appointment to the cultural council. We have a motion before us to appoint Catherine Lavesque of twenty-five Sheldon Street to the council, cultural council through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Is this a new appointment or a reappointment? New appointment. Can I get a motion?
I move to appoint Catherine Lavesque of twenty-five Sheldon Street to the cultural council, council through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second. Any discussion? Thank you for volunteering to serve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item eighteen. Discussion approval of the town administrator's performance evaluation. A motion before us to approve and sign the town administrator's performance evaluation and contract. Can I get a motion in a second, first, then we'll talk, any discussion during the discussion phase? That, that way I keep this, so can I get a motion here?
I move to approve and sign the town administrator's performance evaluation and contract.
Second.
Discussion? Doing an awful job. Go ahead.
Can I, can I, can I just ask before, what is the contract? I, I know where I see the evaluation, what is the contract that we're?
That might be a typo.
Is it both? Is it supposed to be both?
Was for the increase?
Oh, yeah, so the increase, yeah, so the two percent. So am I supposed to?
Do that separately?
Yeah, why don't we do that separately?
So do we have to revise the motion?
No, it has contracts in there. No, you've got it. It's covered under the word contract, so the contract will include a two percent increase for twenty-twenty. Am I correct? For twenty-twenty or twenty-nineteen? Oh, this is for twenty-nineteen. We're in right fiscal?
Fiscal nineteen.
Fiscal nineteen, correct. We're behind the eight ball. Okay. Any discussion? Go ahead.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just thinking procedurally. So we're not, we're approving an increase. We're not changing the contract.
No, we're not changing it, no.
We're not signing a contract.
And we have performance goals, which we've all had a chance to see.
Yep. Okay.
Anybody? We good? All those in favor? Oh, oh, no, no, that's why I'm like, anyone going to speak?
I think, I think, I think, well.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll start. Look, I, I, I think, you know, as the, as the evaluation points out, Mike brings an awful lot to the table and is doing a great job and is working hard, and, and, you know, there's always areas that we can, we can, that we can improve on and we can, we can look for going forward, but, but as the evaluation points out, as I said, Mike's bringing a lot to the table and he's bringing a lot to the town, and, and it's a, you know, for anyone who reads it, it's a very positive evaluation, and it, and it reflects the positive work that he's bringing here to Milton, so, so I think, I think Mike should be congratulated on this evaluation because it is a very positive evaluation.
Thank you.
Right, and actually, just for a little context, the five categories that were looked at were professional development, board support and communication, personnel management, organizational leadership, financial management and town operations, and then community leadership and public relations, and I want to highlight something that I particularly appreciate. I, I think everyone acknowledges, you know, your, your acumen around operations and how well that piece is done, but your support in bringing people along through, through, through the ranks and trying to develop our bench, I really appreciate that because you can read articles every day in governing magazine and other places about how difficult it is in municipal circles to attract talent, and the best way to do that is to grow what you have, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I think, Mike, I think you've done a great job with operational management as well, especially with the DPW, and you have a strong background in that, and we've had some good improvement, I think, in the DPW, so I think your operational management has been very good, and you've made some good hiring decisions. I don't want to name a lot of names because I'll forget some of them, but one of them is right here at the table with us, and that's, that's Jen.
Yay, Jen.
But you've also, you know, Chase Berkeley, Christine and the, Christine Stanton, Birch, Hillary, Arlene. There's been a lot of people that have been hired in the last couple of years, partly funded through the override, and I think they've all been, they've all been very good hires, and I, if I left off any, anyone's names, it's purely unintentional, but those are just examples.
Christine.
I mentioned Christine Stanton. But those are examples of, I think, some of the very good hires that we've had and have been added to the staff, so, so I think that's been a real plus. The only area that I think we, and this is really collectively where we need to continue to make some progress is in the area of communication, and that's probably a result of it's a lot harder to communicate with five members than a three-member board, and we're still only a year into that, and we're, I think it's, I think we've, we're on the way. We're making some improvements there, and part of it is staffing, too. We've had turnover in the office, so there's been a lot of, and some of it is how, how we communicate with the town administration. Some of it's on our end as well, so, so I think communication is just an area where we can continue, probably will always be an area we can continue to improve, but, but congratulations on, on the evaluation, and thank you to the chair for taking the, the laboring pen and, and doing a lot of the drafting, and.
No, I thank Melinda for doing most, and Jen for doing.
Oh, okay.
I just was commenting, just, I was just like trying to put it all together, but.
Okay, my misunderstanding. I thought it was the chair who wrote this, but, so thank you very much, Mike. I thought those are the, those are two very important areas that I wanted to highlight, the, the operational management and the hiring, which is, which is key.
Thank you very much.
We, as I said to you when I walked in tonight, I watched a presentation from Mayor Walsh today on video which he gave last night regarding the issue of trying to rebuild the Long Island Bridge and how important it is to the city and the region, but you were in the first five minutes of his comments, and I knew from the time when you first came here to my front commissioner Evans, commissioner Finn, how many people spoke so highly of you. I didn't know you from Adam, but you've taken everything that you weren't and shared in the city of Boston and brought it to your hometown, and that's a credit to you. None of us are perfect, but every day you come in here, your sleeves rolled up, and I said this to Jen the other day, when you walk in town hall every day now, you can see the impact that you bring there, and that's a positive thing, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much. And if I might, just, I want to thank everybody on this board. It's been very easy working with all of you, and, and I inherited a very, very good staff, and we, we all work together. It's, it's a complete team effort. No one's anyone's boss. We work with each other. We have an open door policy at town hall. If there's any concerns, we see people, people come in from time to time. Sometimes the answer is no. Unfortunately, we try to get to yes, you know, and there are some resource issues that prevent us sometimes, but to your point, select board member Collins, I was taught by some very good municipal leaders that you need to pay it forward, and we're always trying to develop a better staff and look for talent for the town because we all care about it so much, so I appreciate all the kind words and continued efforts of everyone.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Your report.
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. We finally got our last letter from the attorney general's office, so all of the town meeting articles from October's town meeting that needed attorney general's, Haley's sign-off, we received that. The one home rule petition that was filed on behalf of Article ten for the retired police officers was filed, today's Wednesday, it was filed Monday at the state house. I went through full senate council with no opposition, and Senator Timothy's office was writing a letter in support of that, so. The plastic bag ban will go into effect on September fourteenth of this coming year. Educational literature is being put together by Hillary. You'll see some local print media and some social media outpouring some of that. And then I took a look at the annual town meeting warrant, and a lot of the capital projects that were funded, thank you to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, the warrant committee, and this board, the basketball courts at Guile Road, they'll be under construction July first, the parking lot work in the front of the police station, that started Monday. The Tucker roof proposals are in, and they're going to select a contractor to fix the Tucker roof, so a lot of that capital funding and all that projects that went through annual town meeting in May, that work is, is underway or will be underway shortly, so all that, that, all those investments in, in our assets in town are, are being dutifully negotiated or, or worked through, so. That's about it. Not, not much going on this weekend, unless you're in Augusta, Georgia.
You wish you were there.
I wish, yeah.
That's, who's going to win?
Oh, wow, Ricky Fowler.
All right.
I know one guy picked Tiger Woods today, sitting to your left.
You did, yeah.
Mike, could you give us an update on the, the new hockey boards?
Oh, yeah, fantastic turnout. I mean, it was installed on March twenty-ninth. For those that don't know what we're talking about, one of the basketball courts at Guile Road that are going to be reconstructed July first. Both those basketball courts are going to become basketball courts again on September first, have no fear, but a great coordinated effort between consolidated facilities, Bill Ritchie's crew, Paul D'Amano and the Parks and Rec crew, Johnny Baxter and that group, and Chase Berkeley's crew. It was installed on March twenty-ninth, and quite honestly, my two boys, one of them is there at all times, but it, great success, so much success that other parochial parts of the town are asking when they're getting theirs. So there is, there is an outpouring, again, like many of the issues in town, we need to find a place, a home, permanent home for these places, but I think we can solve that. Very, very successful. Have to pick up after some of the boys and girls from time to time, but Gatorade bottles and, and stuff like that, but it's, it's, there've been requests to actually turn the lights on some nights.
Yeah.
That, that's how popular it's been. I can't, I can't imagine when baseball starts and you have baseball down at Pietelli.
It's already started.
And softball and lacrosse and basketball, and to put that in the mix. I mean, you're, you're talking four or five sports down there every night, which is, which is really, it's nice, and it's nice to see the young kids in the town engaging.
Great.
Very good. We good?
Yes, thank you.
So I want to begin by, first by thanking Kevin Crissom, who we all know has recently resigned after many years of service at the town to the board of park commissioners, and for anyone who's watching at home, and I've had conversation with chair of the park commissioner, Regina Clary, as, as Michael has, we only have thirty days, which was less than thirty now, to fill this. I know there've been a couple of residents who applied already, so if anyone is at home who's interested in applying to fill this vacancy, the way the procedures work is we're going to come collectively together on the twenty-fourth. They're going to come to our meeting, and we're going to make an appointment that night. We each have a vote on this. If this, anyone at home watching and to the reporters who are here, if you want to mention this, if they could get a call from him very quickly at town hall so it can be vetted, and again, I want to thank Kevin, you know, when you think about what Noreen talked about tonight, you know, the issues that, some of the issues Michael's dealt with, that if he's heard about being on the youth task force, and obviously myself being on the police department and so on, anything positive that we can do for kids in this town is always a good thing, so the park commissioners have a lot to do with that. We have a lot of fields and a lot of programs, and it's a lot of work. If you're interested in it, prepare on rolling up your sleeves, just like any of these jobs, so I just want to thank Kevin especially for all he's done for the town, and also make that aware to everyone who's watching tonight that this position will be filled by both boards on the twenty-fourth.
May I ask a question on that?
Sure.
What's the process going to be? Are we going to be asking people to come in to be interviewed, or are we just going to base it on the paper?
So what Regina and I talked, we, we just, in talking about it, was the easiest thing to do is let the applicants go to Mike, and almost like it's an employee, let Mike and Paige go through them all, and then get them all to us, and I think we'll have to, we don't have a, we're under the, we don't have a lot of time left, so that's going to be about the only meeting. We're going to run out of the thirty days, but.
What about speaking with people, though?
So I thought, you mean speaking with them ourselves?
Well, or someone.
I think Paige and Mike are going to, I think Paige and Mike are going to do that, but if you want us to do that as well.
So, so, so I'll just, I'll just add, it was seven years ago, back in two thousand and twelve, when there was a, a, a vacancy on the school committee, the process that they, and it was a similar requirement that the, the two boards had to vote.
Right.
Right, and that's the same here. The school committee and the board of selectmen at the time met, and they actually, they had written submittals from the candidates. The candidates included Katie and myself, actually. There were, I think, eleven of us, and the boards interviewed each of us, asked the same questions, I think, but we were all secluded in a room, and so the boards were able to interview the candidates and then voted at that meeting, so that.
We couldn't watch it and know what the questions were.
Exactly.
That's why we were secluded in a room.
That's right. That's right. So that was the process that was used in two thousand and twelve.
So we did this.
I thought it was a good process, even though I wasn't selected.
So Katie, Katie.
I know it was Katie, but.
Katie and I did this two years ago for the school. The Festus Joyce had passed, and we had, both boards had to meet to appoint.
We did, although I don't think, did we interview them?
We were, we did.
What, do we only have one candidate?
We did. There were two, and one withdrew when we got to the interviews.
Matt O'Malley showed up.
Matt O'Malley was the only one. We wound up only doing one, but we were going to do that, so, let's see how, I mean, just in case we had twenty, I don't think we could do twenty, but let's.
It was something like that.
It was a, it was a very long hot night, I remember.
We've received two applications so far.
Right, two applications, so I just want to add, and then let's play it through next week and then kind of have an idea. Maybe we just do that. That might work. Is that okay? Is that all right with you?
Yes, thank you.
When we vote, so there'll be the five of us, there'll be the two parks commissioners.
So seven votes, the majority of seven.
It's a majority.
Gets the, gets the position.
And the resignation was tendered March twenty-seventh, so there's thirty days from that, so it would have to take place at your meeting on the twenty-fourth, and both parks commissioners are aware and will be here.
When does the application submission window close?
Believe we set the date for the nineteenth. Let me just check the town's website. We asked them to send it to Christine Stanton. The chair mentioned my name either or Christine.
You mean the appointment window? I think it closes on the twenty-sixth. That's why I think we have some.
No, no, no.
No.
Yeah, the time in which we'll.
Right.
So could, like conceivably, what I'm looking to prevent is have someone submit something three o'clock day up, so we have a, a nice cushion, four or five days to review these.
And then there's a date there. I think that's there.
The nineteenth?
That's why. I just figured it was easier when I talked to Mike, let's just view it like we're hiring someone, and that way we can, you know, you have the same people doing a fly, and that way, because we don't do this, it, you know, it doesn't fall through the cracks.
Well, the questions would have to be developed, too.
Oh, yeah, we'll have to develop some questions, yeah, so.
Perhaps we could root any questions to, Mike and the park commissioners could do the same thing, and that way they can be gathered, and the chairs could maybe, if we have twenty-five questions, the chairs can refine, correct the list. That's one way of doing it.
Friday, April nineteenth is the deadline for submission.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. Is that all right? Okay, so the next thing, I just want to give a little update. Mike and I had a meeting with Mark Gravely from Howard Stein Hudson, who will be coming in on the twenty-fourth to report out on the East Milton project, but I do want to give you a little bit of good news, is that the project has been fully funded by Mastart. Is it four point three?
Yeah, the rough estimate's about four point two million dollars.
Four point two million dollars.
If you recall, there was some work that needed to be done. When, when they did this inspection of the deck, there's some, the under, undercarriage, if you will, of the deck that Mastart has, understands is their burden, and that they've supported this effort. this effort through Mark Gravely's relationship with Mike DiPenny from Mastart and, and Administrator Gulliver.
That's good news.
It is, and, and we are on schedule for the twenty-twenty-one, Stacey, there's no change in the timeline at all, only because I, I think, did we report on all about Renoff and Schick at the last meeting, did we touch on that at all, about the meeting on that one?
Triscoll was here the night before, yeah.
That one's getting pushed, and I know, and that one, because of the size of it now, has got pushed out a little, just because it's going to be, look like it's going to be a multimillion dollar project. The last thing I just want to touch on, I've met, I've met with, as you know, Katie, you sit on Mastart implementation, there was a report generated for us on the village, I had requests to meet with Dick Burke, Michael Porter, all independently, and I met with Cheryl, I also met this week with Mayor Sullivan from Brantley, who's in a similar thing, so for the twenty-fourth, I'm going to have something to bring forward as, to maybe a way that we can start to move forward, I'm going to talk to John Flynn as well, as well, how to divi, I have the twenty...
Regarding what aspect of this, Richard?
Report, moving like the, getting to the operational, because what, what I can see here is that if we don't start to move on the RFP to deal with a lot of things that are outlined in this issue, you can't do any of it, because they're so connected, at least on the waterfront.
Yeah, I, I think we just, because I got some questions about this at the implementation committee meeting Monday night from, from Dick Burke, and I didn't know that he had met with you until he mentioned, and then he asked me follow-up questions, and I really, you know, not having known about that meeting, couldn't really go over them at that point, but what we talked about in January was, and we have this void on the park commissioners' board, and they're very much a part of the process, they control a lot of the land, so they're, they're a player here, what we talked about was having a small group, part of this board and their board, to take part in it, and to, to kind of come up with what the next step should be and what the next proposal is, or I think that was your proposal, Mike.
So I think you're going to do more than that.
I see, that's right. Stated it correctly.
That's right, that's right.
So...
A working group, I thought.
I, I, that's, so, I, I, I'm going to bring a working group recommendation to, for discussion on the twenty-fourth, whether it's us, you're going to need Bill Clark, he's the most knowledgeable on the chapter ninety-one stuff, Cheryl thinks we should have someone from the MPIC on there, and I wouldn't let, I wouldn't go too much farther than that, I think one of the things that, in talking to her, is that I think this working group, because this is the group that's going to get it done, should be primarily town, you know, from our side, people, and then the York Club, eighty-eight WAF, they're going to be the tenants, Milton Farmers Market crew.
They might be, I mean, there's a bidding process that has to take place.
Right, oh, there is, that's right, those are potential, right, so those, so I think in this aspect, and I want to hear what John says as well, I got, I looked at the twenty-ten, the other thing, too, is there's an easement that expires in June that we're going to have to deal with shortly.
And Cheryl and I have met with John a number of times over the years about this, so, in terms of somebody from the MPIC, that committee, which, I mean, I'm a representative on that committee, but that committee has handed this project off to us and the park commissioners, so I think, I think we need to be the ones controlling it.
I, that's, the other thing, too, is, and I've said this to Cheryl, some of the things that are in there are small, that we could start to chip away at, like putting water in, I've already talked to Chase, putting water in just so that the Farmers Market could have a, it's only about a four thousand dollar project, you would talk about potentially coming up with a, an electric charging station down there, and then another one that I didn't even know about, that I just was told the other day, was a question about air rights over the MBT, I didn't know that existed, I just found that out just recently, because it's, I don't think it really mentions it in the report.
Yeah, I agree, so there's a lot of moving pieces here, and there's a lot of, Bill has a lot of knowledge, but...
I know.
The MPIC's got a lot of knowledge, too, so...
That's why I say there should be an MPIC rep, Cheryl suggested, and I thought it was a good idea, so...
Yeah, I, I guess the question is, is it me, as the, is this board's representative on the MPIC, who's also been in the project for three years, or, and, and I don't want to leave the park commissioners out of this, I mean, I think we need to fill the vacancy and have a fully functioning park board before we can really take much further action on this.
Well, I can definitely tell in talking to all of them that the, the report's been out since January, we've been trying on it for two years, we need to start, I mean, I'm wanting to do it myself, like, we need to start to move this operational to make it real, and so that's what all of them pretty much were saying.
We do, I liked the suggestion that was made in January, I think we just, you know, unfortunately, we've had budget, we've had a lot of other priorities, and there's only so many things that can, can occupy the front burner at any given time.
I agree, I agree.
This is important, but there's been a lot of other important things going on as well, I, so, I agree we need to move it forward, but I like the approach of having a small working group.
I agree, so I, I'm going to...
That includes the park commissioners.
I'll have something in writing. I know, no kidding.
Would that...
Mayor Sullivan gave me some good insight on his, he's in the same situation as I almost felt like I was talking here, but he did have, very similar, like he had to, there were so many things, like, like he had to dredge, because they couldn't get in and out, they couldn't get out, and that, that's really one of the things we're going to be looking at this, we're, we're tied, it's mud, so, they're all connected, so I, I don't want to drag it on tight, but I'm going to have something on the agenda for the twenty-fourth for discussion, and, that's it, that's all I have, Mr. Zulis, I have a lot to him.
I do actually have one thing, on April twenty-third, the Mass Board Community Advisory Committee will hold its annual meeting, at that meeting, Professor Hansman of MIT is scheduled to present his report on what has been called Block Two of the study that was required by the memorandum of understanding from back in two thousand and sixteen, I believe it was, this is a meeting that is sometimes attended by elected officials, so we may want, we may have to, if, if we have certain of us who want to go, we may have to post it, because, you know, this, this, this Block Two study could have a, an effect on our town and our residents, either by what is included or by what is omitted in, in the report, so it's something that is going to have an, could have an effect on the town, and so, so some of us, some, some of us may want to be there, so we may have to post that, so, that's all I have.
Melinda?
No, nothing to report.
No report, I just also wanted to thank Kevin Crissom for his many years of service to the park board.
Tony?
Two things to dovetail on your sentiments, Katie's as well, I'm sure collectively as a board, we all feel the same way, Kevin's done a great job, he will be missed onwards, I would like to remind everyone, some of you, I would hope all of you are aware of the event that's being held next Thursday, it's being put on by the Smart Growth Alliance, the T.O. Drinks at Steel and Ride, I know the two members of our planning board, Pedro Lamaraux and Cheryl Taguayis are involved in that, so I'd like to...
Nice, so I'm glad you remembered.
Yes, so that is next, I brought it up here.
Is it seven o'clock?
Yeah, next Thursday at Steel and Ride, six-thirty.
So you want to post that, Jen, for tenants?
And lastly, I was speaking with Paul Midori, the owner of Fitness Unlimited, and he's put together a presentation on behalf of the Milton Chamber of Commerce regarding traffic enforcement, and he would like to get on the agenda at some point, I told him when we put town meeting in our rearview, that he could come in and make a presentation, so, I'm just floating that idea, I understand that if you would prefer to have a business owner that's also Milton resident make that presentation, that we can do that, too.
I'd just rather have him go on the traffic commission first, and then be more inclined to see how they weigh in on it, because if it's going to involve enforcement, I think you definitely want to hear what Chief King thinks.
Well, maybe we can talk about it.
All right.
Great, thanks.
Anything else? I do also want to mention today that we got a bit of sad news, that Chief Grant's mother passed today, and the arrangements are next week, we send our sympathies and condolences to him tonight, he's had a tough year. Future agenda items?
You mentioned the two, the East Milton deck, Howardstein Hudson's going to come in, and then the Parks Commissioners, the joint, joint board.
Okay, anything else, anybody? Katie, Michael, anyone, anyone have anything? Okay. Item twenty-three, citizen speak response.
I'm going to say something, I don't know if...
Go ahead, you can go first, no, you go first, I'll go last.
So unfortunately, I, 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 I do have to say something, because my name was bandied about early this evening, and, you know, one of the hallmarks of our democracy is this cherished right to free speech that we do have, one of the byproducts of free speech, unfortunately, at times, is irresponsible speech, and irresponsible speech is characterized many times by lack of facts, lack of law, innuendo, questions that are posed that have innuendo and inferences about them, that don't have any facts or law behind them, and unfortunately, that gets out into the public realm, and it is, I think, toxic to our civil discourse, it lowers the level of our civil discourse, and it's unfortunate, you know, for example, Mr. Joe Henning said that I had been insincere, because everything I had mentioned about airplanes had been before May, and he said that I'd been insincere, but he wasn't sure if he was wrong, well, he was wrong, everything, I had mentioned things that happened after May, in, in going through the things that this board had done, but that didn't stop him from saying that, that labeling me is insincere, so, and again, we, we saw other examples of that earlier this evening, so it's unfortunate, it, it, as I said, it lowers the level of our civil discourse, you know, I'm, I'm reminded of, many years ago, when I was a young lawyer, I had an opportunity to work with a very distinguished lawyer named James St. Clair, and he was a very distinguished man, as I said, he'd advised presidents, he'd represented the army against Joseph McCarthy in the nineteen fifty's, and when I was assisting him, it was in a case that had devolved into kind of a nasty back and forth, and I still remember more than thirty years ago, going to lunch during this kind of nasty trial, him saying, you see everything that's happening in this? Don't ever do it, and so that would be my message to any, any young people who may have been watching this or seeing the display earlier, don't ever do it.
Anybody else? So I just want to comment on some of the things that were said, not all of them, I've said to my colleagues here that, and they know this very well, I never came here to be a policeman, I left the Milton Police Department, and that was the end of my career, and when that complaint was brought to me, it was not something I was looking for or expected, but it didn't change the fact that I'd spent over three decades in law enforcement, not just working in the town of Milton, but regionally and throughout this country on issues, and it was clear to me just from the brief synopsis that this was something that potentially was serious and potentially could be criminal, and to Dr. Christensen's comments, I did have conversation with Chief King about this, but given the fact that I realized how serious it could have been, and this investigation could have gone a totally different way from a criminal aspect, and she will never know how many people, including members of this board, gave so much consideration to the work she has done here on behalf of airplane noise and behalf of the residents, that I conferred with and then sent it to the district attorney, who was the chief law enforcement officer, and totally independent of anything in the town of Milton, again, the complainant had no idea I was doing this, nor did anyone else know that I was doing this, and it's easy, as Mr. Zulis says, to come in and throw things all around and say all types of stuff, but from my point of view, I'm aware of the facts of this case, I'm aware of the complaint of this case, and even though Dr. Christensen states she resigned, the vote of this board was to accept her resignation and remove her based on the independent investigation that was conducted, for the record, by an attorney that none of us in this room had ever met before, so given that, those are the facts of this case, and it could have gone a totally different way, and to Dr. Christensen, I will say thank you for your service, but I, it's a very sad day for us that this took place, and it was instigated and perpetrated by you. Anybody else?
Yeah, seeing as Cindy had mentioned my name and asked me directly a question, which was, did I recuse myself from any of the secret meetings, I think she's referring to executive sessions, did I recuse myself from any of the executive sessions about me, or in the board's decision to investigate me, the answer is no, I did not, and the board decided collectively to, to exclude me from those deliberations, so I was not a part of those deliberations, so, I wanted to set the record straight and clear the air on, on that aspect.
I have to comment to that.
Sure.
This board doesn't exclude anyone, we all make our own decisions, I will say this to you, I didn't want to have to say this publicly, you're aware of the conversation that I had with the district attorney involving your presence at a criminal hearing in Quincy District Court, and it was his recommendation, which I gave to you that day, was that you should probably recuse yourself from anything further involved in this case, as I recused myself, given the history that I was aware, as being the former police chief, so I recused myself from it, but you were never excluded, I asked you to recuse, and you stated, and I believe you look at the notes, you accused yourself of that meeting.
Well, I would like to respond to that, I felt that I could be impartial in my deliberations regarding Cindy, and I asked to remain a part of those deliberations, a vote was taken, that vote was four to nothing, to exclude me from those sessions, that's in the record.
Okay. Anything else? So given that, we're going to go into executive session, we're going to start with item twenty-five, so this time, I'm going to make a motion to enter an executive session to discuss the appeals to appellate tax board by Equity House Corporation Winter Valley Residences, and that'll be followed by a second item to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation regarding Howardstein Hudson Randolph Avenue LLC, Chapter forty B, application for the property of six ninety-three to seven-eleven Randolph Ave, Milton.
Friendly amendment, though, believing, just to add, believing that having such a session is an open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating strategy of the body.
Did you get those, Jen? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes? Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
We are on executive session.